I'm on, okay. So, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome back. We have finished our third and final round interview with the candidate a little bit ago. We've been getting feedback on that candidate. Thank you, everybody who's watching who had online and provided the feedback, and those of you in the room. I'm now going to turn it over to Patty Phillips to talk a little bit about what the next steps will be as we decide between three excellent candidates.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you. It's been a pleasure working in the Osceola area schools on this search. So, on behalf of Ken Drexeth and myself, thank you. I also want to thank Barb Olson for the phenomenal job you have done with the search. And Joan Bowman. And I'd also like to thank Veronica Cardenas and Laurel Anderson for all of the help that we've had from the HR department. And Sherri Lincoln, you've been wonderful to work with as well. And Dr. Jim Balk has been such an asset. I'd like to give a hand for all your contributions. We've had a process that's been going on for months, and I know our listening audience observes in our interview this week and last week. And it's been a very in-depth process. And it started out with a lovely brochure that your department dispensed to candidates all over and posted. It had your board talking about the profile of the attributes and skills that you're looking for in the next leader for the Osceola area schools. You included high levels of achievement, closing the achievement gap, attracting and retaining students, someone that had a deep understanding of racial equity. You were looking for someone, and you mentioned it twice, so this is super important, someone that's very articulate with very strong communication skills from speaking, writing, listening, someone that can engage your families. And that came out in the interviews and your interview questions. In fact, all of your interview questions were coalesced around this profile. Someone that can delegate to the phenomenal staff that you have here, someone that can manage your resources, both fiscal and other resources, somebody that puts students first, is willing to make challenging decisions and stand by them, promote a healthy and safe school climate, and someone that can articulate short-term goals and long-term goals and successfully lead them to fruition. And finally, someone that bases decisions on data. And so, the last few weeks of these interviews, we've heard these candidates. And we started out with 21 candidates. And then you had a wonderful process wherein you had a subcommittee of the board along with some administrators from your district and two of us from School Exec Connect that did screening of 10 of these candidates. You whittled that down to four that had first-round interviews, and from there, you ended up with these three finalists. And they had a, each of them had a 13-hour interview in the district. That include a writing sample with a prompt that they had no idea what they were going to have to come cold into a room and write and be graded on their grammar, content structure in a timeframe that was tight. They did a presentation on how to engage families in your community. And they met with focus groups. They met with students, 15 students from each of your three high schools, a total of 45 students. They met with staff, elementary and secondary. They met with administrators, management, and the community. And so, you had a rigorous process. And now, we're coming to the point, after having all three of these finalists have their final interviews, where you're going to make a decision as a board. When we do this, we have a process that we've been using for the people that have been with our firm for 14 years have been using. And it usually works beautifully. So, I'm anticipating it's going to work well here today. I know you're going to have a tough decision because you had three really strong candidates. And so, I'm going to pass out a post-it note. And on that post-it note, you're going to act as though you can make the sole decision on who you would like the Osceola area schools and your school board to enter into a contract discussion with to be your next superintendent. You're going to write only one name on the post-it note. And I want our listening audience to understand that the board has not dialogued about these candidates to this point. As they took their 45-minute break between their meeting and this portion of the meeting, each of them were in a sep, they were in separate rooms, not discussing, they were reading the feedback that the stakeholders had submitted online. So, that's why we had the break. Otherwise, we would have zoomed right into this. So, I'm going to walk around with these, and then I'll collect them when you're ready. And then, we'll have a discussion. As I uncover these, I would like you to think about the skills and attributes and positive characteristics of the candidate that you wrote for your choice. All right. Three individuals had Cory McIntyre. Two individuals had Lisa Sales Adams. And one individual had Ryan Lager. So, this is an opportunity for you now to have a discussion about why you named the individual that you named and how you feel they best meet the profile.
They want to go first?
I will go first.
Okay.
Shock of all shocks.
Thank you.
I chose Lisa Sales Adams, not because I don't think the other candidates are qualified, but because I feel that they are all very qualified and any one of them could lead our district and any of them could bring us forward. The reason I chose Lisa is because she has already a connection with our community. I also believe that if one of our big, right at the top of our profile, it says reducing our achievement gap and having racial equity. Currently, our cabinet members are all white. It's tr, I mean, it just is. And if we had a leader of color, that would reflect our community more. We're 54% of color. And since I feel like all of our candidates are qualified and Lisa has experience in going out to other communities to hire teachers of color, she's increased her MCA score. She does a multi-tiered approach of literacy with EL and special ed. And teachers being trained together and working together to do that with collaborative planning. She actually has connections with Promise, the Promise Neighborhoods, and Pillsbury United Communities, which are very well-known established communities that work with kind of bringing down barriers and doing, working with the opportunity gap. I think her style of leadership by using "we," not "me" all the time, shows the, a lot of, a lot of cultures have a collectivist way of thinking, and it shows, it shows the whole teamwork working together in order to lead. I think one of the things I really appreciated, and my favorite question was, if you could do anything, what would you do? And her first thing was to create positive and welcoming environments for every single student. I think that's exactly what our district needs if we're looking at bridging a divide between the two districts. I'll, that's enough for now.
Someone else?
Sure. So, I had selected Mr. McIntyre. And again, I'd echo Jackie's statements on this is, was a very robust process. We had very qualified candidates. I think what was unique is that they were all brought something slightly different to the table. So, they're all exceptionally qualified. What I thought about Mr. McIntyre was, right off the bat, he talked and used the language of one district. And I think we've articulated here frequently that that's something that we want to pursue and want to build on. And on that, he frequently referred to work that was being done that he wanted to build upon. So, while there's things that we need to correct and things that we want to refine, I felt a genuine desire that he's going to come in and he's going to assess where we're at and he's going to take us forward from that foundation. So, I really appreciated him recognizing the strengths of our district and wanting to build on that. Additionally, I felt that frequently in his examples and discussions in terms of what would he do, he brought the accountability back to the board. He said, "with the board," that he would bring choices to the board. So, I think that that was a true display of partnership and accountability amongst our leader and us as a board as well. So, I really appreciated that shared accountability. He also has very strong administrator experiences in terms of the number of years he's spent at executive level positions. Also, his broad work across his experiences in budget, negotiation, curriculum, equity work, special education, levy work, boundary work. I felt that when we look at the work ahead of us, and he had articulated this, that he felt his passion and skill really aligned, which is why he was interested in us with where we needed to go. I really felt his experiences were right in those spaces that we need to be working on. So, that was something that was really important to me. Additionally, when I looked at his recommendations of support, it was noticeable to me that he had a broad set of recommendations from people who worked for him, with him, and above him. So, I really liked that broad support that demonstrated to me that he could work across all levels. I'm really interested to hear the other feedback, too, because, like I said, that we're not voting at this point. We're kind of expressing where we think strengths are. So, this is a really difficult decision, but I'm articulating kind of what I thought Mr. McIntyre's strengths were and what I felt was important in naming that name on my card.
Someone else?
Jessica, you want to go?
Well, yeah, no, I, just observations. Interesting how numbers changed from their first rounds to the names that are listed today. I think that's very interesting. I think all of our candidates were amazing and wonderful. They were. I put down Dr. Ryan Lager. To me, he, it was clear, the best communicator of them all. That's something that is extremely important to me as a board member. He's the face of our district. He's the one that's going out, talking to our Realtor groups. He's selling the district to our community. He's the one that we are relying on for information to make our decisions. I feel like he has that background. He has the experience. It's not that the other candidates don't. I just felt more confident in what he brought to the table. So, I'll just leave it at that, at this point.
I'll go ahead and share, in agreement with other board members who've spoken, we are really fortunate to have had the opportunity to interview and get to know three exceptional candidates. And we're really fortunate to be in this position, to get to choose from three really highly qualified people. It was extremely difficult for me to write down one name. That was a real challenge for me. And even as I sat here writing, I kind of crossed it out and started over again because it was really hard for me to narrow that down. And I will say that I ultimately wrote Dr. or Mr. McIntyre's name because of, basically, Tanya, you stole all the things that I was going to say. But I also had things about the other two candidates that I really, really love. So, you know, three really well-qualified candidates, this is really difficult. But ultimately, I felt like when I look at that list that we came up with, together with our community, of what our district needs, I felt like Mr. McIntyre really hit most of the boxes. And so, that's why I ultimately wrote his name.
I'll see.
Okay. And I echo as well what everybody else has said. You know, I really want to thank Cory, Lisa, and Ryan because, you know, each of them have taken heroic steps along this journey. And it's weighed heavy on me and my heart and my mind the last couple of weeks and even today, as we approached the decision. You know, for me, this decision is about change. It's about the 22,000 students in our district. And it's, I believe this is a defining moment in our district right now, aligning some of our most pressing issues. Many of us are coming off of a really extensive and robust campaign trail, so hearing a lot of the different views within our district, so a really fresh perspective. And I think we're, many of us are in agreement, as it shows on our profile, that we want a leader that is able to unify our amazing district and build on our greatest asset, which I believe is our diversity. I think our district has, we truly are like a microcosm of America, and I think that's what makes us special. And, you know, we have the opportunity now to be, to take the lead, to be cutting-edge of what it takes to be a destination district. And again, I really take to heart what we've heard, the feedback from our students and our teachers and our cabinet and our community and our families and ESPs and teachers to address some of these issues. So, for myself, when I zero in on where we are as a district, I really, my recommendation and my, what I put on my paper is Lisa Sales Adams. I think that her desire to ensure all students are successful is apparent. She's able to be, her ability I've seen through all the recommendations that she's received as well as the present, public presentation, the way she handled the Q and A was that she's, her ability to be inclusive of every single student while really recognizing and uplifting the differences in our district, from special education to our gifted and talented to our students of color, leveraging those unique attributes. I think she has a strong sense of fiscal accountability. She has a data-driven approach. She has classroom experience as well as building, leading buildings. She has, her exposure through family engagement and implementation is very apparent. Her evidence-based understanding through classroom experience, her reverence and respect for the students, for the board, for businesses, and the community is, also speaks volumes. I think she has a really calm demeanor. Because we have so many things coming at us right now, I think that's what we really, for me, that's what we need, somebody who's able to remain calm, take in a lot of information, and have some stability and adaptability when we are faced with some of our most pressing issues. And lastly, I'll kind of touch on, she has a lot of integrity and trustworthiness, being a member of this community as well as understanding larger districts and trying, and bringing those together is really evident. And I believe that the only way change is going to happen, which I think we're all in agreement with, is through our leadership. And so, I really am taking a critical look at what I think our district, the fifth-largest district in the state, needs. And I really believe that we have a star here in Lisa Sales Adams. Thank you.
So, by process of elimination, I, my name on there was Cory McIntyre. And again, I've said all along, I'm looking to hire somebody to be the CEO of a $320 million company. And with that, you have to have knowledge across the broad spectrum, knowledge and experience, from strategy to HR to finance, to curriculum, to operations, and communications. And those are all critical functions. The ability to delegate. Mr. McIntyre has basically run a $100 million budget in special ed, the biggest by far of any of our candidates, huge financial responsibility and huge educational responsibility because that reaches across every grade level. The ability to manage through others, managing all of the middle schools in a time of significant change going on in the district with boundaries and buildings. So, I think that executive experience of managing that is very strong. Looking at long-term and short-term goals, I think when you're redesigning a process and you have to redo the staffing and redo the delivery model, you have to look at that. And I think he's done that. Data-driven and experience with levies and boundaries and curriculum, I think, very hard choice. I mean, you know, we had all very good candidates. I think Cory is the best fit for us right now and be able to bring us together with strong leadership and building the talent pool that we need to have amongst our administrative staff and our assistant superintendents and our principals. And I think with the level that he's worked in in the past and the types of things that he's done, I think he's the best candidate for us right now. But it's, yeah, you know, you're going to be up at night, you know, thinking about the decisions you made because this is why, you know, what we were hired to do.
And you are hired to do this, and this is a huge decision, an important decision. And I just want to compliment you, how the depth of the comments that you made and the work that you've done as a board. We thanked a lot of people, but I'll tell you, you have really, night after night, day after day, I mean, this has been, and I know this isn't the only thing you do in your lives, so, and I want to also compliment, Ken and I both want to compliment the transparency of this district. I do not know if you're, the people in this community understand that this is so rare for a board to open up and have a public dialogue of the candidates like this. Yes, it's an open meeting, and everybody's welcome to always come, but to have a live, televised, Ken has never had this. He's been doing this for 14 years. He's never had a live discussion of candidates. And that's how transparent you are. And the way you opened up the candidates to, and the feedback system that Barb set up where you have people giving you their input on these candidates. Why, you know, within a half hour, you're tabulating and reading it is remarkable. This is really a board that's transparent and does their homework. So, anything else anyone would like to say about, you know, we could do another, you know, after you've heard things, if you got, I want to have you have a chance to say whatever it is you want to say because you really haven't discussed these candidates before. So, you know, feel free to keep discussing as long as you need to. But we eventually have to get to the point where you reach a majority of you want to enter into, a resolution to enter into contract negotiations with one of these individuals. So...
I would like to add on the presentation component of the interviews. I thought that Mr. McIntyre's was exceptional. I thought he brought in the academic model, the research-based practices, but he actually translated that into an actionable plan for our district with very comprehensive, specific tactics on how he would reach out to the community. And so, I thought that was really unique. I thought it was very tailored and comprehensive, and I thought it reflected his knowledge of our district as well as his practical experiences in community outreach, as well as some more innovative, forward-thinking ideas to actually go out into our community as well. And with that, some of the language experiences that he had had, another, so that, to me, that was, I think, a differentiator was that presentation personally. Additionally, one thing that stood out to me in terms of his responses from the student discussions, and all of the candidates actually brought this forward, I thought, I was, I was impressed by our student participation. That was the largest group participating and providing feedback. And it was wonderful to see the consistency that they provided on all three candidates as well. But when Mr. McIntyre spoke against what he, regarding what he heard from the students in that theme of, do we have resources equitable across our district, I thought that he had a great idea in terms of transparency and communication among principals. So, to be very clear on what are we doing in each building and have that shared transparency across that group as a team. Additionally, in terms of equity and some of the challenges he faced across our district in terms of our unique needs, I really felt he gave some really good examples of student-driven responses to some of our concerns or issues. So, he mentioned the Stand Tall Against Racism program and that the students were educating other students. And so, I really liked that idea, that combination of not just district leadership, being involved in driving greater community engagement, but students sharing with students and taking leadership roles. So, I thought that was really impressive.
I'd like to add just my perspective with Dr. Ryan Lager. One factor that weighed heavy for me was cabinet feedback. These are the people that are going to be working with him every day, day in, day out. Ryan, in my opinion, received the strongest feedback from cabinet. He also received very strong feedback from the community. There was a lot of feedback from the community, very strong support for Ryan. He mentioned programs like Avid and implementing them district-wide. I thought that was great. Very innovative in his approach to funding, building bridges with the community, just very impressed with everything he brought to the table and the feedback that was given. So, that's probably the single highest factor in my decision for Dr. Lager.
I would like to say that I agree with all the statements that you've both just made. One of the reasons why it was really difficult for me to make that decision is because Dr. Lager is so innovative and brings an energy that is so unique to the table that I don't think our district has really seen. That that was really difficult for me to decide, you know, which direction I wanted to go. But I will say that during our interview process, some of the things that I picked up on from Mr. McIntyre that was important to me was his strong community engagement skills. The, he's been a part of the largest referendum passed in the state, which is something that our community could be facing and is really important. Obviously, significant experience with special education funding, which is really important. But he also really talked about how results matter and how to get there. And I felt like that was really important and that he used multiple modalities to get there and to gather feedback from our community staff and students. And one thing that I really loved was that he was really clear that he's willing to revise as we go. If what we're doing is not working, then he said that he was willing to stop the process and figure out what does need to be done. And he seemed really invested in relationships. And I think that he would be really good at building relationships within our community, our cabinet, staff, other staff and students. And I gathered that he was really personally invested in our district, which was important. And he wasn't the only one, but I did pick up on that. And of course, his experience with boundary changes in a large district, because that's what he's doing right now, is really significant changes in his community, and those are things that we're working on with ECMAC right now. So, those are just a few of the things that I really appreciated about his interviews.
And I think I, that reflected some of the things that I was interested in. But Tanya, you had mentioned about the presentation. And I was extremely engaged by that presentation. And I've given hundreds in my life. And the ability to, you know, put something up there and understand it well enough that you can reference it or say, hey, this is what we're going to talk about, but engage in a conversation. You leave the bullet points up there, but you're really engaged because you know what you've done. And you've, you've put it together, you've taken it to heart, and I... And I think Corey demonstrated that better than the others. And that really helped me understand that I think he, he understood that and it was a passion. And I think it was a passion. I figured it was a three-by-four or four-by-four, but 12 or 16 specific things with being able to call out, I've done this, I've done this, this is what I would do here. And I think that was extremely helpful and engaging. You know, everyone had a different style, but I think it was the style combined with the depth of the knowledge of that and having lived some of that that helped me, you know, define a little bit more of where he stood in the mix.
And I would just like to add that I've been doing family engagement and parent education work for over 25 years. And I think Corey had really great, he had a really great presentation and really great examples. I feel like Lisa had a tried and true framework, two tried and true frameworks for parent engagement and involvement. And the piece that stood out for me for Lisa was that she kept mentioning parent education, which is a whole level above just being involved in your kid. And when you have parent education on top of the parent involvement, there's multiple research studies that show our academic achievement goes up. So for that to me, and then her support for training principals if they're not used to doing with pre-K, I also think that all of our candidates, I mean, I went through our profile and all of them have great ideas for doing the achievement gap. They all have great ideas for attracting students. They all are very engaged and interested in, in the racial equity piece and making sure there's a career path for all students. One thing Lisa, that Lisa stated in one of her interviews, I think sometimes it's hard because she was our first one to remember everything that she said, and she has such a calm demeanor that it's hard to remember sometimes what she said. But remember that as a female of color, we, I'm not a female of color, but I'm female, and that we have to sometimes temper ourselves in, in the education world so that we don't look like we're, you know, too emotional or whatever other stereotypes there might be. So I don't want to go by just that kind of a factor. She really addressed making sure upper, underrepresented students were involved in the talented and gifted, and how do I identify underrepresented students to make sure that they get into the talented and gifted. And she is involved in a lot of those. She's also, another thing that I think hasn't been stated is, I think there was a value with our teacher group and our parents group and a bit with the cabinet group on people who understood and have experienced different levels of being in the system. And Ryan has been a teacher and he has been a principal and an administrator. Corey has mostly been an administrator. I don't think that's a hindrance for him, that he, I think he's, knows how to build relationships well enough that he would be able to do that. And Lisa has been an elementary principal, a middle school teacher in administration. She's been a principal of an ALC. She understands that piece of our community that often doesn't get left behind. So that's a couple of things that I wanted to add.
Well, I feel like we could all keep going down the same, totally path for support. I'll just lay it out there, I'm probably not going to change or shift my, my opinion on who I'm going to support. So if you want to.
Continue. Trying to convince each other.
I was just going to offer up, and I don't want to stifle the conversation if you have more things you want to say, but eventually, when you get in these situations, let's say you're locked 3-3, well, you sort of are because you're 3-2-1. So it's sort of a 3-3. You know, you're saying all three candidates are good, now you need to look in your heart. Can you live with someone that maybe you didn't originally indicate? And, you know, eventually, somebody's going to have to move over. Because if you all stay the way you are, it'll be like, you know, school boards that can never elect a chair over a really long time.
Can I just, Patty, say one thing? So, yeah, we're going kind of round and round, and, you know, we have our candidates. I would like to just challenge, just in our thinking, we talk a lot, I mean, I've been in this district, my oldest is in eighth grade, and pretty much every time I go to a meeting that the board puts on, and it's always about racial equity. Like, I mean, it's usually the core in some way, whether you're talking about boundaries, whether you're talking about our magnet schools, you know, whatever you're talking about. And so, I mean, I think this is really the opportunity, if we're all saying the same thing, that three candidates, I mean, we've all said, three candidates, yeah, they're, they're great, we know they have the basic skills to do the job, so what sets them apart? And I don't think there's any louder way and more distinct way to say, we are going to address our racial equity opportunities, let's say, better than hiring someone of color. I think we talk a lot about, how are we going to, scratch your heads, like, how are we going to hire teachers of color, how are we going to do this? But if we're not, I mean, I just feel, if we're not able to, knowing that all, all candidates are capable to do the job, if we're not able to just call it out and just, and move forward with it, with somebody who can, who's really walked the talk, who can bridge our divide, who just because she's a woman of color doesn't mean she only cares about students of color. I mean, I think she was articulated that, I think we saw that in the feedback, I think we saw that in her presentations. It's truly about our, all students, but it does set her, I believe, apart in our district. And it starts to show our community that we're serious about this. We're serious about, we want to be the, one of the best districts in the state of Minnesota. Our district has the opportunity, we have, I work at Hennepin County, you know, we always are talking about this labor shortage. And guess what? I mean, we're like the part of the answer to, we're a big part of that solution, right? Because we're the fifth largest district. And who's going to build those relationships with our businesses, with, with, historically black colleges, with communities of color, with businesses of color? You know, who, who has that proven track record, that natural ability to do that? Somebody who understands our community, who actually lives in our community as well, who's raised kids in our community. And what stood out to me was, I think that was pretty cool when she said, after the presentation during the Q and A, she was talking about she had two sons graduating and from these schools, one was from, I think, Maple Grove, and one was from the ALC. And I'm like, wow, what an interesting perspective to have, that you don't just have kids who are just on this path of, you know, high school, blah, blah, and that you, you know, you're able to kind of navigate through the system and really have people kind of understand where you're at. So, you know, I would say she's absolutely my, the number one candidate for those reasons. And I believe in my heart, like you asked, that is what sets her apart. I feel like, and in no way do I mean to alienate any other group in, in this district because I, I am, I, every part of our district is important to me. But I just think as we're facing some of our, the most pressing issues in our district that, that continues to rise up to be the one that struggle, we all struggle with the most.
We're facing growth. We're facing boundary changes. We're facing financial cliffs coming at us. We are facing the need to revamp curriculum to bring more students in. Those are some pretty significant challenges facing this district in that, you know, I believe Corey has the experience to help us from an executive level and the ability to take on a broad range of things like that. You know, that's, that's what I'm looking at, you know, someone who can lead everybody to address many large issues that we have across the district. And, and I think that's where he can excel. You know, when you've been running a $100 million budget, when you've been running programs across K through 12, when you are, you know, managing a group of schools and principals, you know, when, when you have to take into consideration everything that goes into student services and things like that, I mean, that's huge. That, that touches every area of the district. And I'm looking for the competency in a leader who sees all of those pieces and can bring all that together and lead, you know, put the strategy together and lead. And I think Corey can do that the best. And, and that's what I'm looking for in a leader of this district to move us forward across many axes of performance into the future.
I agree. When I looked at this process, which again was very rigorous, I really felt it was my job to evaluate the candidates against the decision criteria and the profile. And, and you know me, I'm an analytical person, I've got my spreadsheets, I wrote down what every single person said in every interview and compared again, compared them and their experiences to one another. And, and I really am looking for the best qualified and the best fit to lead our work forward with the many different levels of work that we need to do across many facets and really to achieve that mission up there on that wall. And so for me, as I stated earlier, I really think that Mr. McIntyre is the most qualified and has the most breadth and depth of experiences in order to fulfill that mission for our students.
I'll just add that a really, another important factor to me is the it factor, the inspirational factor. And Lisa and Ryan had that for me. I appreciate both what they bring to the table. Thank you for your heartfelt speech. That really means a lot, honestly. So I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, we talk about inspirational and, and, you know, being able to connect. And there's, and everybody had different ways of communicating. And there's slow and steady, there's, you know, versus, not flamboyant, but, you know, a little bit different. So, but again, that it's the communication of the experience, the leadership, and where we want to go. And, and you can do that many ways. And, you know, I, I think Corey, everyone communicated in different ways. I think Corey was able to communicate as we asked questions, as, as, in the presentation, as we asked questions, as he answered the audience, was able to address them strongly and be able to get his point across and, and show a direction pretty clearly. So I, I enjoyed that piece of it. And going back to working with the board, a lot of it was bringing things to the board to work together, that, you know, we can have, we need a strong leader, but, you know, our goal is to set the boundaries, to hire the right person and give guidance. And he, he was clearly talking about working in that type of manner.
I just need to say one more thing and then maybe we put a vote. I've been a teacher for 27 years. I've taught at every single level there is, I've taught with every community that you can possibly think of working with. And I'm in the trenches and I see my students who look at me and say, why do I have to listen to you because you're, you don't know me and you don't know my experiences? Or why do I have, I mean, look at our principals and our superintendents? And I'm speaking of the district I work in, I'm not speaking of Oseo, but I imagine that it's a translatable experience. My own children are multiracial. And I have a daughter that it was transformational for her to have a teacher of color. And I think, I think we have a lot of students that will do well under any one of these superintendents. And I think we have some students that will do better under, under Lisa's leadership. And I super appreciate Corey and Ryan, and I would love if they want to come work for our district. I, I would work hand in hand with them easily. I just think this is an opportunity to do something a little more. And all the arguments that I've heard, every single one that has been brought up, I've seen Lisa also say the same things. So that's why I think this is just, it's, it's, it's personal to a lot of our families.
I'm glad that you shared that. I was thinking the same thing, that a lot of the points that we've all brought up are reflected in other candidates. I absolutely agree with that. One of the points that you brought up about the parental education is something that's personally important to me, but I also heard brought up by other candidates. And that makes this decision really difficult. And I think that, I don't know what, you know, I hear Jessica say, this is, I'm firmly placed here, this is what I believe. And I feel like that's what you're saying also, Kelsey, I'm firmly placed here. And maybe some of the rest of us are feeling that way too. But how can we move forward in making a decision today about who we think is going to be the best leader for our district? And I don't know what that looks like, but I think that we need to maybe change the conversation a little bit so that we can get there.
And I agree. You're at an impasse and somebody, or more than one person, would need to change their position in order to move forward, one or more people. And when, you know, I, I would offer another color Post-it note, but I don't think you're at that position right now. It seems like you're firmly entrenched where you are. And so somebody's got to give a little, somebody or, or one or two people or, you know, I, I don't, you know, because if you're, you know, if you're all firmly entrenched, then we're never going to reach consensus. And we, we need to reach consensus. You need to think about, it's kind of like the fist-to-five that you do, you know, I absolutely would block this person. It doesn't sound like you're going to block anyone, you know? It sounds like, you know, you, you give a one, if I, you know, I could, I'd love them, you know, and this is my person, but I, you know, I could live with this person and I wouldn't block them and I would, you know? So we've got to get that mindset where, how do we reach consensus on someone that you can all live with? And to do that, you know, one or more individuals have to move from where they are.
My one and two are Ryan and Lisa, so even if I switch my vote, I would, it would be 3-3. I don't know what to do, honestly.
So I'll just put it out there that I am extremely conflicted and I'm in the, the position where I would be happy with any of the three candidates. But I still currently feel that Corey is ultimately the best fit, but I would not object to either of the other two candidates. So for me, I would, I guess, need a little bit more persuasion to move, to change my vote to one of the other two candidates.
I'm looking at this from meeting the needs and the ability to, to lead everybody and to grow everybody and to represent everybody in the district and to be able to work with us to do that. And I, I think it came down to working, the ability to work with Corey, who has worked across many disciplines, all grades, big districts, boundaries, levies. He has shown that. And I think looking at other things is, is nice, but when it comes down to the competencies that we asked for, I think he takes, you know, by far more the boxes. So I, I want to have somebody who we feel had, you know, is checking the boxes from a competency standpoint and can grow all students in the district and can work with all constituencies, all constituencies in the district. And I think, and his ability to communicate and his ideas about community outreach, I think we're the strongest. And if we want someone to work with our communities, you name it, either physical communities, communities of color, communities based upon where you live, however you want to do that, I, I think his ideas around that and what he's done, I think are the strongest. You know, that's, that's how I'm looking at this. I'm looking at a leader who can go across and work with all of our cabinet members, all of our assistants and sups, and they'd be able to bring them together. And I think Corey is the strongest in that by far.
And I would disagree.
Okay, that, that's fine.
And I still haven't heard anything that you said that Lisa doesn't have.
Right. Or Ryan.
Or Ryan, for that matter.
I, I'm not going to, yeah, I, I would disagree with that, but I'm not going to go talking about and making direct comparisons. I mean, that's not fair to anybody.
Right.
Some of that comes down to personal opinions, but I'm trying to base it upon the data and how people, you know, talked about data and talked about plans and talked and, and how people, you know, talked about data and talked about plans and talked about, you know, what they would do, what they have done, how they've done it. And that is what I'm, I'm most concerned with.
Yeah. And I said on our first round of interviews as well, I was looking for differentiation in terms of qualifications and experiences. And I do think that Cory has.
He has no, no experience in the classroom.
He, he's worked with students through other forums as well.
True. It's a big one though.
Yeah, yeah. But I think overall, to me, the list of experiences and qualifications, I felt was strongest and experience with what we're facing. Although I also felt Mr. Lager, he was my number two choice. I felt that he brought a lot of innovative experiences as well and had a great reach and breadth and had a passion that would be a benefit to our district.
They're all great candidates. I, I don't mean to single anyone out. They're all phenomenal. And, and it's proof because we are really struggling with this.
Yep.
And it's extremely stressful. Reality is, is we could, we wouldn't go wrong with any of the candidates. That's the reality. Yeah. I don't know where to go. I really, I genuinely don't. I, I hear your arguments. I think Ryan spoke for himself, in my opinion. He, anyway, long story short, I am stuck. I still am not willing to move, but I keep going, I guess. I don't know.
Oh, you know, and I agree that Ryan was very eloquent and, and has a lot of energy. And it was a very hard decision. You know, I, I like some of that. And, and I would hope that, you know, that some of that does translate to others in the district as, as we get new leadership, that, you know, that, that leader will reach out, hopefully it's Cory, will reach out and, and bring more voices into it with some awesome ideas. I mean, he had good ideas, everyone had good ideas. But I think, you know, having the managerial competency in place with big systems and being able to do that, we're looking for a leader. We're looking for a leader across many different areas. And, you know, we talked about not being a direct teacher, but when you're working with some of the most challenging students in the school system, when he's a school psychologist and you're working with those students, I think you gain a tremendous amount of experience. So that, you know, that to me was a, a positive of where he started his career. And then bringing it, you know, into, you know, Executive Director of Student Services at several different levels, that touches all the pieces of the district. I mean, that's, that's what he has. He's, he's had that executive experience across all those areas of the district for 10 or 12 years. So, you know, from, from that experience standpoint, the ability to do the job and step in and start working immediately, I, I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a better choice.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I think that, you know, Lisa also just being, going through the district as a parent is something, is a, an attribute that speaks volumes as well. Her ability to connect and know our community. And, you know, frankly, living on one side of our district, to be able to really build that, that bridge in our community, I think she naturally is able to do because the strong connections. And, you know, we really saw that. I mean, I think when, you know, we had her, one of her first or second interview, I can't remember, just the amount of people that came out to watch and support of her. So that was pretty impressive.
When we think about the needs for our student voice and if there is a candidate who would have a differential impact to students, what I thought was very interesting was the students themselves had very equal feedback across all three candidates. So I just want to be aware of that, that we've heard from the students on the candidates. And there wasn't necessarily a, a powerful voice that said, we have a preference for one candidate over the other. So I just, I just want to consider that.
And that's a very good point. I mean, they had that opportunity, but that did not, that did not show. Some people may want to, you know, work that hard, but when you have a, a very diverse group of students coming in and, and giving, you know, similar feedback across all and not jumping into saying, I like this person because of X and having it said over and over again. You know, I, I think that's positive. I mean, we, we brought in good candidates. They were all able to connect. So, you know, I, I think that.
They all did the, a great job with the, with the students and the students were very diverse. They were more diverse than your demographics. And they were very receptive to all three candidates. In fact, they clustered afterwards, seemed like they didn't want to leave. Your kids are awesome. What Ryan said in this interview, I mean, their questions were meaty. Their follow-up questions were amazing. They were so polite. I, I just got to give a quick commercial while you. Just for the people in this district. I don't know, you know, we were at Oseo Senior High School. And your principal's phenomenal. Every staff person, and we were lost a lot of times. It's like a maze there, kind of like in here. You don't know where you're going. People are so polite and help you. And the kids were so awesome and they held doors open. And this is a fabulous district. That's my quick commercial. Any of the three candidates will be very lucky to lead this place. So what are you thinking? Do you want to try again with a, another color Post-It note? Do you want to talk some more? We've got to somehow move from this position. It seems as though you, you've all said it in different ways that you could live with any of the three candidates. So there comes a time in each board member's life when they must think about being willing to do that.
You know, one of the clarifying, can I ask a clear, and I don't know if I can ask like my fellow colleagues a question, but I mean, you know, a couple, I think you had mentioned the ability for your preferred candidate to lead the entire district. Do you think that another candidate can't? You know, like, I mean, I think, you know, it's always a little dicey when you get into race, right? When you're talking about race and, and, and I'm very careful because what I, I don't mean to say that one candidate, you know, because they're a person of color or not is going to be representative, but I think we need to be careful that, you know, with the intent of the comment. It wasn't a comment to say that, you know, Lisa would only represent black kids. You know, I just want to really make that clear to everyone that's listening in the audience. What I'm saying is that I believe that we need to be inclusive in our district and make sure all of our students, you know, are, are exceeding and excelling in whatever that means to them. And we're engaging our family, whatever that means to them. But having a critical eye on some of our historically underrepresented communities, the communities that historically, you know, not performed to the standardized approach and, and measures that, that have been established that we all use, even though it's a point in time. So I guess I just want to really make that clarification and then ask back after I've made that clarification. Does that make sense? And also with some of the comments, is that, would you say every candidate can lead the district?
I would like to answer that. And I would like to say that, yes, you're clear. Definitely understand what you're saying. And I also think that it's extremely important that we not talk about what candidates can't do. And make sure that what we're saying is positive. Because the fact is, is that all of our candidates are going to have deficits where we're going to have to be doing some training. And I don't want to highlight them in this setting. So that's my answer to that question. And I also think they can all lead. That was something that in my own personal notes, I wrote down for each candidate that I thought they'd be a great leader. So if that helps you.
Yeah, no, it does. Yeah.
And for me, what I, again, I was listening for examples and what they specifically brought forward. And Mr. McIntyre, what caught my ear was his very first interview talking about one district. And, and then subsequently elaborating that. And so to me, that was really powerful, that, that was his starting point in that he proactively brought that language forward into what his vision for our district would be. So that was very powerful to me in that regard of leading our district.
Thank you.
Other thoughts? Board chair, where do you think we should go with this?
You know, I, I still think, you know, if you want to send, if you want to send that around for, for support, I mean, maybe we do four, two, maybe we do three, three, maybe we end up at three, two, one again. I'm not sure. But I, I think that, you know, we, we need, as we said earlier, or as you just mentioned, you know, it's not about not working with certain areas, but I think, I think Cory is actually, you know, from the special ed to talking about the highest, to talking about everybody, talking about one district, it, it's, you know, it's not racial groups. It's all of our groups who are performing differently than others. And how do you raise them all up? And I think, you know, I, I think he has some strong credentials there and, and will be the, will be able to do it.
So before we move on to possibly doing that again, I just have a question. In the first time that we kind of went through and decided to eliminate one of the candidates, we had numbers and there was kind of a clear, at the time, second choice. Obviously, those numbers are different now, but would it be appropriate to do something similar? If we can't agree on a first choice, maybe we all feel similarly on a second choice. And we've all expressed, I think, that we would be okay with any of the candidates, that maybe we can come to an agreement in that way. But I, I don't know if that's appropriate.
So you'd want to do, you know, it's your party. If you want to do one, two, or if you want to do one, two, three.
You mean? Is that what you're kind of getting at?
Well, I was just getting at like, the same thing we did before, one, two, three. And then seeing where, where we all fall. If, if there's a common two, maybe we can find common ground that way.
That's a good idea.
We can try that.
It doesn't mean that we're dropping somebody out. It just means get a.
Right, right, exactly.
You're not going to vote until someone has a resolution. So this is just fun. One, two, three. And you can just write the four names. The three names, pardon?
One, two, or?
Yeah, all three.
She wants one, two, three.
Yeah. So then we could see a clear where the middle is.
Maybe get a whiteboard for me?
Thank you so much. Oh, boy, we're at four o'clock.
Maybe not. Maybe it'll get more confusing.
I don't know.
I don't know. I'm just trying to think of another way for us to move forward.
I think it was a great idea.
Why not?
I don't know. You think things are going to go a certain way?
Who knows?
I don't know. And like I said, I'm extremely conflicted.
I hear you.
Extremely.
I completely understand that. That's fair. Whispering in the back.
Looking over there.
I heard my name back there. People are trying to text me during this process. People are, I don't know. Not looking at that.
I have a baby student only till five, so I'm like.
Has the snow started?
No windows.
Plus when you walk in front of the main office.
The peanut gallery says, no, it hasn't started yet. They have that one window there.
I was going to look at the MINDoc cameras, but. I can look at it. We've got a couple hundred MINDoc cameras around the entire state.
No, we've got to commit them later.
Here comes the whiteboard.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, yeah.
Just going to go to the bathroom. I'll bring it back while she's writing.
It's a bio break. Tanya's turn.
That's an awesome reason right there.
Cock-a-doodle-doo? No, but it's, it's coming.
Are we supposed to get like sleet or any?
Yeah, it's coming right up from the south. So you got
Freezing rain.
A lot of moisture hitting the air coming down, so. It was sort of drizzling this morning.
Oh, it's collaborative process over there. It's collaborative process over there.
Cory, one. Ryan, two.
Freezing rain.
Lisa, three. Lisa, one. Cory, two. Ryan, three. Lisa, one. Ryan, two. Cory, three. Next one, Cory, one. Ryan, two. Lisa, three. Next one, Cory, one. Ryan, two. Lisa, three. And the last one, Lisa, one. Cory, two. Ryan, three.
Oh, wow.
Ten. Twelve. Fourteen. Let's check our math. Is there a math teacher in the audience?
Right in front of you.
Just because you're a math teacher doesn't mean you know how to.
Cory would have the least number of points, which means he was elevated. And Lisa is second and Ryan is third. It's another way to look at it. It's very similar to what you ended up doing with the three, two, one.
Right.
But it's another way to look at it. So Heather, that was probably a good idea.
She's in the bathroom.
We can discuss a little bit. And then the other thing we could do is do a one, two. I mean, if you wanted to, but. You have, Cory has three number ones. Lisa now has three number ones. Ryan has no number ones. So I'm thinking if we took another vote, it would be three, three, if we did just the names, I'm sensing, which we predicted might happen.
But, but you're also looking at the strongest level of support across everybody.
Yeah.
At Cory.
Yeah. Well, absolutely. That's why he has 10 points.
Yeah.
So I think this helps a little bit.
So I don't know if you're at the point where somebody is ready to make a resolution or if you want to discuss some more.
People have to look at that and, and see where the, the strongest support is for everybody. Do you get, you know, get your number one, but you get your number two. Number two, I think is strong.
Yeah.
And I think that's what you suggested, Mike, when we did, you know, Heather, we did this.
So are we?
Someone could raise a resolution.
Yeah.
And we can vote on it and see if it passes. If it doesn't, then we clearly would need to continue talking.
So, how do we, how do we proceed? I can make a resolution and if it, if it passes, it's great. And if it fails, we, we keep talking. But that same resolution could or cannot be made again.
It cannot be made or?
I, I don't know. Do we keep voting?
You, you'll just keep voting. No.
Let's, let's explain what just happened for everybody. This is everybody, this is just an attempt to.
Find common ground. That's what my goal was.
Yeah.
Okay. And this was everybody just kind of ranked the three candidates, one through three again, one being the preference, right?
And, and what you see in here, the themes that you see. And, and what you see in here, the themes that you see is this candidate had one, two, three, four people put this individual in second place, two put this individual in third. Now, someone had moved over, so nobody put this individual in first place. You look at, this individual has three first places, but also has three third places. And, and this individual has three first places, but two second places and one third place. So, I mean, in a way, if this was going to be it, if you were going to vote based on this, this would be your candidate? If we were doing, when we did the first rounds, that's how this process would work.
Right, but at the same time, even though Ryan got the largest score, he had the most secondary support.
Yes, yes.
So it just gives us a visual of, you know, where we are, but at the same time, it, I don't know, it just changes the way we...
Yeah, I mean, we need to come together and, and work with whoever this is. And it sounds like, why am I so loud over there? And it sounds like that, or not sounds like, it is, the, the greatest overall average support is for Cory. So we do have to work with somebody, and they have to work with us. And I think it, it may seem easier for all of us to come together, based upon now that we've shown, you know, the cards a little bit more, you know, where, where that secondary support is. And, uh... So I, I, I don't know if we need any further discussion about how, you know, great each candidate is, but I think that we've shown in our minds where the support is and, and how we see that overall. Were you going to make a comment, Jessica? I didn't want to...
No, I think, I think I, I think we as a board could work with any of the candidates. It's clear, based on just numbers, who the number one is. But what's... Obviously, okay, so I'm the only one for Ryan. So I switched my vote, and the deciding factor is Lisa has classroom experience. She has the ability to inspire a whole district. I didn't get, well, okay, I don't want to go into the negatives.
I think something interesting during the presentations, when you looked at the community members, looked at the mix of staff and community and parents in the audience, when Cory was speaking, what I observed in the room was everybody was leaning forward, really engaged. And so I thought that was really differential amongst the different candidates. So we're kind of talking about qualifications, who we think can engage most, but that observation to me was really powerful and just, I mean, everyone was really engaged in what he was saying. And in that interaction, it was the most in-depth Q and A, that session we had after the forum too, in terms of in-depth answers and engagement and positive feedback specifically on the, on that Q and A portion. So to me, that community engagement piece, I just, I, I saw that physically demonstrated in that room, whereas we're sort of talking about what, what we've heard from the candidates. And I just, I feel like I saw that in that room that day.
And, and that piece drives connecting with students and communities and getting their voice and, and better understanding what needs are across the communities. And, and I think it was demonstrated that, that he had the ability to do that and, and then be able to take it into action. And it's not just the superintendent taking action, it's all of our wonderful administrators who have already been taking action along several lines, moving things forward. And, and I think, you know, the ability of him to, to grab that group together and, and move forward even faster, I think he would have the strongest ability to do that because he did connect with the community. I mean, I think he did garner, you know, good support and rapport, so.
I want to remind the board that that presentation was to the board and not to the community. And so when you're thinking about your audience, that might play a factor in how someone might prepare for the presentation.
To clarify, I was talking about the Q and A portion, not the presentation portion.
You said both parts.
Yeah, the Q and A portion was...
I agree with you with the Q and A portion.
Sorry.
So i- if we need, you know, we as a board need to work together, and we need to work together with a leader. And I think it, it's showing that there's one person that would have the most support, and that, and that person is Cory. So I'm ready to make a motion to move this forward.
I just, I want to, I just would like to clarify one thing. I think they all have support. I mean, I just want to just make that really clear, like every single one would have support from the board. I think that, I'm just going to, one last, you know, point is that I, I really do believe that what we need in our district is to advance and kind of get over some hurdles that we're facing right now within, with capacity, with boundary, potential boundaries, with achievement and with unification. And I, I do believe Lisa is the best fit for that. But I do want to just say that I think that we could work with any, all three of them.
Okay. Any other comments? With that, I would like to make a motion to authorize the chair and the vice chair to enter contract negotiations with Mr. Cory McIntyre as next superintendent of Osseo Area Schools. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, is there any further discussion? With that all in favor of moving forward Mr. Cory McIntyre and authorizing the chair and vice chair to enter into contract negotiations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Roll call.
Yeah, so everybody, let's start on my left, so...
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
I, I mean, we, we can keep talking, but we, we've shown where our support is. So the support is clearly stronger with one than, than another. And, I mean, that didn't come from one person saying that's the way it is. I mean, we all vote, we all put our preferences up there in, in that manner. So i- it will take a couple people who have Mr. McIntyre as number two to try to move away from the deadlock and say, a- as was stated, you know, we all like our number ones, and number twos are also very strong. So can we live with number twos? You know, and, and that's, you know, for, for two of you are closer than a third. But, you know, well, two people in a room or one of those people in the room who have Cory as a second, be willing to say, yes, we're going to work together and, and we need to move forward.
Just to be clear, those are not votes.
Yep.
I didn't say they were votes. I said that was your preference.
Right.
So... So, you know, the, the way we're split, and again, it, it comes down to what people think, you know, was the best way. It, it would take a lot, oh, I don't know if it would take a lot, but you have people who are all voting number one on one, trying to move to a number three. But we have several people who could move from a one to a second choice. And I think that could be a lot easier to do, and I, I think that, you know, I think that'd be the best way forward. We do need to work together.
Yeah, I would say additionally, with thinking about what you've just said about having somebody move from, moving their number two preference to their number one preference, we also have four of us who've said that Dr. Lager would be a second preference. And that is another area where maybe some of us would be willing to move our number two to our number one in that area. So even though, it's just something to consider.
All good points.
Yep.
So maybe it'd be helpful to reopen some conversation on Mr. Lager. To me, I found him to be very innovative when he was speaking about the different things that he's done and had experiences in. I had a, I kept thinking, wow, I'd like to try that here, how could that work here? And in his final interview here, he did talk about that it would be about scale. So how would he learn to adapt some of those innovative ideas to a much larger scale? I, I really appreciated his experiences at multiple levels, like, like you said, Jessica, in terms of elementary, being, being a teacher, being a principal, and being an administrator. I really actually loved that small district experience because I really did find that breadth of exposure and ability to get your hands on what people are experiencing at that level and the decisions that they are going to need to make or do make would benefit him as a superintendent and, and helping to set vision and helping to work through those decisions through other people. So I really loved his academic ROI that I thought was really unique, being able to add a perspective of what is the investment level for the benefit? And so when we think about the investment that we're going to ask from, from our community going forward as we grow, I thought that was a helpful framework to begin to think about. What is, what is going to be that investment, and where do we see the benefits? And so I, I felt that was really unique to him. Oh, I really loved his examples of working with the board. The board retreat, him talking about, we need to look at all those priorities, top to bottom, and maybe focus, which was another thing I loved about his three to five things they did well. I think we do, I think focusing on our strengths and accelerating them while also working on what might, what isn't working, I, I think is beneficial. I think just having a laser focus on whatever that three to five things are, whether it's a mix of strengths and opportunities, but I do think we need some laser-focused effort going forward. So I thought that was really beneficial.
Yeah, coming out of our recent board retreat, we had, Jim just sent it to us, dozens and dozens of potential things that we want to do. And, yes, it will take us in conjunction with whoever that is to pull those together, plan them out, prioritize them, and, and move forward across, across all of those. And, and, you know, the ability to keep talking about, you know, work to the board, do the retreats, you know, I, I heard that from, I certainly heard that from Ryan, and, and I heard that from, from Cory, so. And we need to work together. I mean, we, we need to work with a strong leader and give them direction, and also get feedback. We're a new board. And, you know, I, I think someone who's worked with boards at either the high level and, and doing a lot of leadership across a district, or being a leader in a smaller district with big district experience, you know, both of those, I think, would work well with us. Did you have, I, I think I jumped in. Did you have more points, or I think you may have a... No?
Who?
You.
I thought you were talking to Tanya.
No, no, I thought, I, I sort of interrupted Tanya, but I thought you were looking to say something.
Yo, Heather, would you want to say something?
You can go first, that's fine.
I, you know, I just wanted to comment on the other two candidates because I haven't yet. I, I do see, you know, I think Ryan does have an energy about him. I think he has some really great ideas and concepts to move forward. And I think, you know, he did remain, you know, he was really explicit about being vulnerable around kind of some of that equity work that he's, you know, not as familiar with, you know, but he's, I guess I would say, open to, to that. And then Cory, I think that probably what, you know, I rank Cory two because, you know, the engagement piece is like really close to what I believe in. I think that he has the ability to really engage and just have that kind of, kind of walking the talk around that, around bringing a lot of our families in and students. And I'm just sensitive to some of the feedback we receive from some of the leadership in the district and, and, you know, just looking at some, looking at that feedback, as well as from other areas around having that classroom experience. But I do really value the ability to engage and have real concrete examples of, of engaging. So those are what I really see the strengths in the two candidates. And, and I would say, and why, you know, I'm bringing up Lisa again, I think she also has that, to me, the combination of the two. But I can see for those two, I just wanted to add that flexibility in thinking there.
Okay. I just wanted to share a little bit about what I really liked about the other two candidates, because I've talked quite a bit about what I liked about Cory. And I'll start with Dr. Lager, and I would say one of the things, I'm just going to keep it kind of short on the two. But one area that I really liked his thoughts was the achievement gap. And what I liked about it was that his understanding of the gap was different than the others in that it's not just these numbers and not just these curriculums, but it is all encompassing, multifaceted approach to bringing that gap together. And I really liked his perspectives on that, which were, I feel like, unique and fresh, things that we haven't experienced here in our district. However, in the same topic of achievement gap with Mrs. Sales Adams, I really, really liked that she had two very strong, specific content areas where she has actually done specific work in. And so I feel like both of those strengths are undeniable in both candidates. They're both really fantastic things, and I really like those things about both candidates. So I just wanted to share that in part of my thinking that those are areas that I feel really strongly towards both of those candidates.
Jessica, did you want to add any more? Originally, he was your number one.
He's my number one, and I...
Do you want to elaborate?
I would stick with my number one originally. I don't know, I'm tired. I, between Cory and Lisa, my preference would be Lisa. You may be able to retake a vote, you may have support for Cory at this point, if I'm, I don't know. I'm not sure what the next step is.
I, I think there's been a good discussion. You know, we've, we've talked about the positives of, of everybody and why we would vote, you know, for, for maybe a second. But I, I do think that as we, we've talked about things, that, no, maybe we have enough support for one. And trying to do what's, you know, best for the, for the district. And we're all going to have different opinions on that. But I think it's coming down to some small stuff right now. And hopefully that, moving in the right direction so that we can coalesce and, and start the process of, of working with that person in a very positive manner. You know, that, that we're not having any negatives, or there's not any type of division.
Absolutely.
So whatever we vote, you know, and, and if we do come to a resolution, you know, I still think there's going to be support to say, we're all going to work together going forward.
Absolutely.
True.
Yes.
Well said. The whole discussion has been very affirming to all three candidates. If they're all listening, they're going to feel really good about themselves, as they should.
Because they're phenomenal.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is a, you know, that's the problem when you have three good candidates. You have a discussion like this.
It's an incredible problem to have.
I don't know if you'd want to look at it another way with doing one-twos, or...
I think we're probably ready to do another vote. So with that, I'm going to make a resolution to authorize the chair and the vice chair to move forward with negotiations with Mr. Cory McIntyre as superintendent of Osseo Area Schools. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. Nay.
So we have four to two.
There you go.
Okay.
So congratulations to Cory McIntyre, and thank you all. I mean, a lot of people are very stressed right now. It's been a very hard, long, stressful process, and I thank everybody for their participation in this. And now the, now the fun work begins. We have a leader, we will work with that person, we will begin to move the district forward. So, thank you all. Any comments or questions? Patty, how would you like to, to wrap it up?
Well, when you adjourn, I'd like to thank you all for your hard work throughout this process, your articulate, I mean, just the comments that you made, the in-depth analysis that you had was amazing. Want to thank you so much. When we adjourn, we'll make a call to the successful candidate and let him know. You all can be in on it, we'll have the chair call him. And then I'll make a call to the other two candidates, and I'm envisioning that all three of them have been listening, so it probably won't be a surprise. But I just want to thank you for your diligence and your passion, and I... But I just want to thank you for your diligence and your passion, and I know you're poised for continued success. You have an amazing staff here, and thank you very much.
And I want to thank you for helping us
Thank you.
through this difficult process, and I really want to, to thank Dr. Lager and Mrs. Sales Adams for, for coming on this journey with us. They'll make great, they are great leaders. They'll make great leaders wherever they want to go, stay where they're at or move forward. But I thank them very much for, for what they've brought to us and, and helping us with potential new ideas as we go down the road. So thank you very much to them.
Thank you. And I, I would also just like to thank my fellow board members for transparency. I think about when we had our discussion about what our operating principles would be. I really think everybody operated in a spirit of transparency and candor and really heartfelt investment in this decision. So I just really want to thank all of you, and I refer to kind of what Mr. Lager had said about the, the feeling of this board, and I do feel like we'll work really, continue to work really well together with our, with our candidate here.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say that if I could take all three of them and put them together and make them into one person, I do want to say that even though in the end I still wanted Lisa, I am really super excited to work with Cory. I think he's an amazing person, and I think he will do a lot for our district, so.
Thank you.
I suppose I better say something. Even though Cory was my number three, I'm excited to get to work and move forward as a district. And I would like to say that I, I know Cory's gonna do a great job here, and I just want to just remind, you know, we are committed to having an excellent district and being, being one of the best districts in the state, and, um...
Which is one of the.
It's the, excuse me, the best district in the state. But I just, I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, we heard, I mean, all the people that, you know, I just think all the community members that have come out
Right.
and commented, and, I mean, we hear you very much, which is why this decision was really, really hard to make. And I just hope, I, my intent is that we continue these conversations and building the rapport with our community to better inform all of our decisions moving forward.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry, I just wanted to say something.
Triple quadruple what she said.
Just got to say, yeah. I, I just want to echo what Tanya has said, that we couldn't have done this without transparency and cohesiveness, and it was really difficult. I know for me, and I know each of you, worked really hard. And I also know that Dr. Bauk has worked really hard to help us through this process and to get to this point. And so I just want to say thank you to you for all of your hard work in this process and getting us here. So thank you, and I look forward to moving forward.
And thank you to Laurel and
Yes.
Barb.
Everybody.
And Joan and Sherry and Veronica, because, holy cow.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
Thank Ken, Ken wasn't here.
On behalf of the board, on behalf of the board, we want to thank all of them, and Randy and, who's in the booth today?
Your mom.
All right, and this is not an Oscar acceptance speech, so, uh...
I need the hug. Where's the hug?
With that, I will, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
One of you will have a second. With that, let's vote. All in favor to adjourn and, and move on? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.